Good evening. Today is Monday, September 27, 2021. It is 6:05 PM and we are here in the Nashua North High School Boardroom. Ms. Bishop, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Ms. Seem?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, you go ahead.
Here.
Okay, thanks. Just one of the things that has come to our attention over the past year as we have learned from COVID and transitioning out of COVID is that the right-to-know law covers members of the board joining us in a meeting by electronics or other means of communication. So that is subject to RSA 3A, B, and C. And it says that a member of the public body may participate in a meeting other than by attendance in person at the location of the meeting only when such attendance is not reasonably practical. Any reason that such attendance is not reasonably practical shall be stated in the minutes of the meeting. And then it says, and then it says, any, part E, a member participating in a meeting by the means described in this paragraph is deemed to be present for the purposes of voting. Hold on one second. It says that, oh, I guess that's it. So, a public body may but is not required to allow one or more members of the body to participate in a meeting by electronic or other means for the benefit of the public, subject to the provisions there. So, having said all of that, Mr. Guarino, could you please state the reason why you are unable to be here tonight? Did we lose Mr. Guarino?
Yes. Yes, I'm working late.
Okay, Mr. Guarino, in case people can't hear him, says he's working late. Does anyone in this board have any objections to Mr. Guarino participating by electronic means? No? Excellent. Okay, this time we have done it correctly. So, moving on, Ms. Bishop, could you please call the prayer? And, let's see, Ms. Brown, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Before we do that, do we acknowledge the other people in the horseshoe? I didn't get to finish the roll call.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was just so excited to do this properly.
I know.
Go ahead.
So, in attendance, we also have Dr. McKinney, Dr. Sarfdi, Mr. Parker, Mr. Donovan, and our student representatives, Mr. Dunn, and, oh my gosh, I'm completely blinking on you last night.
Brunel.
Ms. Brunel. I'm so sorry, but we're so happy to have you here.
Okay.
That is everyone here.
Ms. Johnson, did you need something?
Yes, we just have to find out if Mr. Guarino is alone in the room.
Oh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Guarino, can you please state whether you are alone in the room at the moment?
I am alone by myself.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay.
So, in the prayer, Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you, everybody. Okay, so this evening, we are continuing to recognize, oops, thank you, we are continuing to recognize students from our schools, and we have a couple people here to speak to that this evening. I'm not sure which goes first, but I will go ahead. Mr. Richard raised his hand, so he's volunteering. Go ahead, Mr. Richard.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. Very excited to be here and show off Nashville High School South. Again, Keith Richard, proud principal of Nashville High School South, and I appreciate the invitation. So many wonderful things are going on in our schools, and love to take the opportunity here to do a quick couple of highlights before I hand it off to my esteemed guests who came out tonight to help us with this presentation. First, last couple weeks, we've done some great celebrations of students. First, the other day, last Friday, we recognized 13 national merit semifinalists from Nashville High School South. This is the, yes, quite an amazing accomplishment. We also had four students who reached commended status. This is based off their performance with the PSAT last year. And, not to brag, but the 13 semifinalists were the largest number of students from a New Hampshire public high school.
Wow.
So, quite an amazing job. Also, this past Friday, we recognized 11 students from our ELO population that tested out. We recognized them, had them come down. And I often, I'm amazed that these students that come in from another country not knowing the language, I always think, if you dropped me off in the middle of China, Japan, Mexico, I don't know how I would do. I'll be honest with you. I think I'm pretty resilient, pretty resourceful, but I see these young students come here and announcing them and over the intercom and having them come down, their faces were, it was great. It was just awesome to see and to say that they are now proficient in the English language. I was down there, one of my ELL teachers, and she provided them their scores and said, "You keep this. If anybody ever asks, you are proficient in the English language. Congratulations." So, it was just an awesome morning to be able to do that. Next, I handed out a sheet there with some of our artwork that's been done. Some of the murals were done last year during COVID, when we kind of had our hybrid students in to keep kids engaged. I think the top left, I hopefully say this right, but I believe that is an adaptation of Starry Night from Van Gogh, so hope Ms. Ferengers is watching, so I can see that. So, that is a student mural that they put together down in our art wing. A couple other projects. This project's amazing. They do it every year where they receive photos and portraits from an orphanage, and our students take that picture, paint a portrait, and we send it back. It is just simply amazing, the talent that is in our art departments. On the backside, just to kind of keep things positive, as kids were returning, we did something called the Bathroom Door Project. You kind of put positive sayings on the bathroom doors. And a couple other projects, again, similar to the memory project, there is a portrait from a nursing home where our students were drawing some pictures, and they have a community service project they're doing upcoming for Halloween coming up. So, just, again, some academic accomplishments, but also our art department does an amazing job. And there's just so much talent walking all of our schools, but are certainly proud of the Nashville High School South kids. The biggest highlight is we are back in school, and it's been great to be with our students. Yes, exactly. Thank you so much. And it's just the small things. We were just up here just chit-chatting, being able to talk about the accomplishments. You know, I was in a meeting earlier today with Spencer and Liz, and just being able to get back together to talk about different things in our school community, make it better. And just, it's so nice that we are back and having those conversations and being with our students. But getting back into school, it's about the kids. So, we wanted to really work with our students because it's their start, it's their year. And I'm going to ask Josh Gao, who's no stranger to this horseshoe, to kind of come up and speak, because he was instrumental in the planning of how those opening days went. And we really appreciate that we had that schedule. We opened up with freshmen, we opened up with sophomores. They each had their own day. Traditions are important, okay? And those sophomores missed out on that, so it was great that they got that. And then we had a day designated for our juniors and seniors to kind of roll us back. So, it really went really well. We appreciate the flexibility with that opening, and I think it was a great success. But Josh, you want to talk about how things went?
Awesome. Is this on? Haven't felt these nerves in a while. So, back to school was really incredible. Everyone was so happy to be in school. We had some of the largest turnouts for athletic events, for field hockey. We packed the stands for that. Football game, as you guys saw, was absolutely incredible. I'm on the golf team personally, and we've just been, you know, growing every year. We had one kid who normally plays number eight, is like last on the team, but he shot like his first birdie. We put his ball in like a trophy case and everything. It was awesome. Going back to the classroom, there's so many things, like the whole dynamic, the whole feeling towards school. School is no longer the thing where, like, oh, I have to go to school. Like, it's like, people are actually getting excited to go to school, which has been awesome. On freshman orientation, we had freshman orientation, sophomore orientation, we had a junior-senior day, did this big workshop with the entire student body, got all these volunteers involved, and everyone was just super happy to be a part of it. So, yeah, those are just a few of the things that have been happening at our school. And one thing that I thought was kind of funny, I was talking with my Princeton interviewer, and she interviews, you know, Phillips Exeter, a lot of these schools, like, in the entire area. And what she told me at the end of the interview was like, you know what, there's something special about Nashville School District kids, something like different about them that just makes them stand out, and that makes them just awesome. So, I thought that was super cool to hear, that, you know, she works all these students across the area, but she thought to pick out Nashville School District. So, I just thank you guys for all the work that you've done here. I think we're really on to something great. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And next, just want to kind of highlight some, a team of ours that is truly a dynasty. In New England, we've kind of lived with a Patriots dynasty for the past, you know, 20 years. We'll see how Sunday night goes coming up. But we have this math team that is just purely dominant in our state, and I don't think we do enough to give them their due. So, tonight, I even invited our math coach, Kelly Gabriel, math teacher and head teacher at Nashville High School South, to speak about that. And some of her mathletes are here as well to kind of talk about what the team means to them and how things go. So, without further ado, Kelly Gabriel?
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here and to speak on behalf of the South Mathletes. I've been coaching the team since 2006, and over the course of my tenure, this team has expanded in size, and it has excelled beyond my expectation. And I believe it's really, truly due to the student leaders. They have steered the team year after year. They run practices, they make practice problems, and they really, you know, strive for excellence, and we've seen it over and over. And our league is comprised of about 18 to 24 schools, and goes from Keene, as far west as Keene, as far north as Pembroke Academy. We've been, well, 12 years, we've come in first place. I don't want to brag, but it's, it's. And this streak, this momentum, has really built excitement around being in math competitions, believe it or not. We've had years where I've had 93 students that want to participate, and our league allows 10 in the roster. And I usually bring about 25, 30 students. And we have a roster of 10 that holds the team rankings, and then we have alternates. But 90 students, I certainly couldn't leave them hanging. So, we've instituted another math competition in 2017, and we do this during E Block. So, this is for anyone and everyone that wants to compete. So, that's really exciting. We're starting next week, our season starts next week. However, we have done so many other competitions, I'll probably forget some. We do the WPI Math Meet. We do AMC, which is the American Mathematics Competition. It's a precursor to the US Math Olympiad. We do a Girls' Math Meet at Yale. We've done very well there. What else? We do, we've done MIT-Harvard Math Competition. This competition called So You Think You're a Mathematician, that's a lot of fun. We've done MATLAB-sponsored competitions. Armol is one, that's a regional, well, it's American Regional Mathematics Competition. We do that at Penn State. And then there are so many that the kids are in tune to. And there isn't a year that goes by that I'll get an email, "Ms. Gabriel, can we sign up for this competition?" Sure. So, we have such a phenomenal group of students, and I really am just honored to be part of their journey. And so, I'm going to introduce two of our lead captains. Our senior captain, Abigail Thomas, and our junior captain, Krishna Davi, is going to speak first.
Hi, so my name's Krishna. I'm the vice captain, like Ms. Gabriel said. I'm pretty new to this whole leading thing, but as a part of math team for like the past two years, I'd just like to share a few words about what math team means to me. So, math team is something I've been doing since ninth grade, and over the years, it's become a really big part of my life. I think one of the biggest reasons I enjoy math team is because of how unique the problems are. Most people find it weird that we stay every Friday after school to do math for fun, but the math that they picture us doing is really different than what we actually do. The problems that we do include, are very different from what we learn in school. They include more of logic and recognizing patterns rather than just memorizing formulas, which is something that most students hate. So, there's also really no correct way to solve a problem, so it's really up to your own personal interpretation and your own strategies on which you choose to use. So, that definitely makes it a lot more creative, which is something I personally really enjoy. And you can almost arguably say that it's a combination of both math and art, that there might be a little bit of a reach. And then the SMASH competitions, which happen once a month, are also something that I really look forward to. Even though they're called competitions, it's really more of just a learning experience. Most of the people there care more about the actual learning rather than just getting a high score. You'll see many kids trying to solve the problems after they've already turned in their paper, or for events that they aren't competing in, which is really motivating. And like Ms. Gabriel said, the fact that Nashville South's team has been first for many years is, really adds to that experience. So, I'm definitely honored to be a part of such a dedicated and inspiring team. Okay, huh, sorry, I'm too short for this. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Abigail Thomas, and I'm the current senior co-captain of Nashville South's math team. And I've been a part of the varsity team since freshman year, and I was the junior co-captain of the team last year as well. So, from that introduction alone, you can probably conclude, wow, this girl must really like math. And you would be right. Anyone who knows me knows that math is one of my strongest subjects, and I have an apparent passion for the subject. However, contrary to what people expect, it wasn't always this way. I remember from a young age, my parents stressed the importance of developing my math skills. They would buy me books to practice my arithmetic and sent me to after-school classes, but I didn't really take it seriously and kind of just did it because I was told to. It wasn't until the beginning of middle school that I started to become more invested in learning math. I struggled a lot initially, and I spent many nights after school crying from frustration. No shame. I'd think to myself, I'm not smart enough for this, and I was quick to give up whenever I couldn't think of a solution right away. And around this time was when I joined my middle school's math team. There, I was surrounded by kids that were just like me, and sometimes I would see them stuck on problems, and I would wonder how they were able to keep their calm while they wrestled with a problem. I asked the older students, "Why do you enjoy math so much?" And they told me that the satisfaction of getting the answer was always worth the struggle for the solution. Many students can probably relate to my initial frustration with math, but math team has taught me to abandon the idea that struggling means failure. Through my middle school years, I built my perseverance, and I was able to get a lot better at math. I also grew to really enjoy the problem-solving process. And by the end of middle school, I couldn't wait to get involved with South's famed math team. I'd heard so much from my older friends about the team's success and all the fun meets that they did. And I'm proud to say that I found some of my best friends through the South Math Team, and I'm able to surround myself every day with ambitious people who like to challenge themselves. The Nashville South Math Team holds weekly practices, as was stated earlier, and these are held after school on Fridays in the lecture hall. And during these practices, we work together to solve challenging problems, and I think these weekly practices really help to foster a collaborative community within our team. Math Team not really, not only helps improve math skills, but it also teaches a lot of interpersonal skills, like how to effectively collaborate. The South Math Team also participates in many competitions, our biggest being the New Hampshire Southern Mathematics Association of Senior Highs, that's a mouthful, or SMASH meets. And every month, we travel to a high school in New Hampshire to compete on topics ranging from arithmetic to advanced math topics such as pre-galc and calculus. And for as long as I can remember, South has performed extremely well at these meets, many times placing first in the large school division, or as Ms. Gabriel said, for the past 12 years. I'm a little bragged. And our, and our math team is recognized by schools throughout New Hampshire for our consistent outstanding performance. In fact, many of our students get invited to join the New Hampshire State Math Team at these meets, which just shows how math team can open so many opportunities for kids. Even discounting the competition aspect, these meets are truly a highlight of the experience. I look back so fondly on the long bus ride spent playing cards and word games with my friends. And these meets really help to strengthen the bonds within our team, as well as form connections with students that don't go to our school. The South Math Team also aims to share our passion for math with other students. And during the lockdown, we offered free weekly math tutoring over Zoom for students of all ages, from elementary to high school. And the math team really values giving back to our community, especially during these hard times. So, we did what we do best, which is share our love for math. And now that we've returned back to school, we're planning on starting a new project to start SAT tutoring for high school students. Many students pay for expensive tutoring programs and books to help prepare for the SAT, but this makes it really not accessible to people who don't have as much money to afford that. So, our goal with this project is to make these resources more accessible by offering free weekly tutoring during E Block. And we've teamed up with the Math Honor Society and English Honor Society at South to get volunteers that can coach for all parts of the SAT. And we'll be circulating a flyer within the next week or two with more information and a signup form if students are interested. So, just to wrap up, I'd like to say, on behalf of the math team, that we're incredibly grateful to both Nashville South and the district for continuing to support our math team. Math Team has taught me so much and has helped me build my confidence, perseverance, leadership, collaborative spirit, like, I could go on. I honestly don't know where I would be today without it. And we hope that Nashua continues to support our high schools' math teams and strengthen its math programs for elementary and middle school students as well. And we will, in turn, continue to give back to our community with projects like math tutoring and SAT tutoring. Thank you all so much for your time.
So, again, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. It's great when we can spotlight the wonderful kids and the coaches that volunteer their time to guide these students through these great adventures and endeavors and things like that. So, it's just another great diamond in the rough that we have. Our schools are so large, North and South, it's just great that we're able to offer so many opportunities, there's so many things. Kids can certainly find their niche, and if we have something that, or if we don't have something that they want it, we always have an adult in our schools that are willing to offer and get that up and going. So, it's just great. So, again, thank you guys for your time tonight, and thank you guys for coming out and speaking on behalf of South. So, thank you.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. This was really interesting. So, I didn't know there were that many math competitions. Enjoy your evening. Bye, Mr. Gao. Okay. I have to say, my math team in high school was not that successful. We were kind of all about the snacks.
Good stuff.
Yeah, well, okay. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And if everyone will recall, last time, we had removed some meeting minutes from our consent agenda. I don't see that it lists both dates on here, but my understanding is that both dates are intended to be on here. That would be both 8:30 and 9:13, because both of those are up on the website. So, I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Seem made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gilio was loudest. Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I just have a question here. Are these going to be summarized every time from now on versus verbatim?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not doing verbatim anymore?
No, this is more in line with what all the other districts in New Hampshire are doing. So, for verbatim, we still have the audio recordings available, and people can watch them on YouTube.
Okay, I'm not going to support this, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we do, oh, go ahead, Ms. Brown?
I just had a question. Was that something that was edited in the policy committee to change it from verbatim minutes to the summarized minutes? Or is that something that we just changed?
So, we don't have a policy one way or the other. We never have. Our former secretary who did the minutes did them verbatim, but I'm not aware of any other districts in the state that do that. Dr. McKinney, are you aware of any other districts that were doing them verbatim?
Nothing I can think of.
Okay. So, now that she has retired, the person that we have doing them now is doing them the way that the other districts are doing them. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. We do have to do roll call with Mr. Guarino on the phone.
Okay, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we don't have any items removed from the consent agenda this meeting. Does anyone have any communications outside of the consent agenda this evening? Nope, I don't see any. Okay, so this brings us to our first public question comment period. This is the public question comment period limited to items on the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, as we have been doing, I would ask everyone to, oh, you know, I forgot to say ground rules and right after we had that whole training about it. So, I'm going to take a second to mention that. We do ask that people do not speak while other people are speaking, so that we can all have our time uninterrupted. I also ask that we all behave in a way that is respectful of others. That means don't block the exits, don't interfere with other people entering or leaving the room. Please do not interrupt when members of the board are conducting the business of the district. And if you sign up, you will have your opportunity to speak. We definitely want people to be able to have their three minutes to say what they wish during public comments. Okay, what I'm going to do is read the name and then the name after, so that the second person can be getting prepared. All right, so the first person on the list is Adam Markku, and the second person is Cara Cantwell.
My name is Adam Markku. I live at Ford Jewelry Lane. I'm also the president of the Nashville Teachers Union, and I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of the paraeducators and their contract that is on your agenda this evening. This afternoon, the para membership met in this building and ratified their contract with a 92% approval rating, sending it to you. And I'm here on their behalf requesting that you approve this contract and send it to the Board of Alderman. For those of you who have never been a para or a teacher or worked in a school, this group of people is often not recognized properly for the work that they do in our schools every day. I can tell you as a classroom teacher, both as a first-grade teacher and a fifth-grade teacher, that had the paraeducator that I worked with every day not been there, I probably would not have survived teaching as long as I did. They often worked, work with some of our most challenging students. They often worked with some of our most challenging students. They go from one room to another. Their schedules are crazy, covering classrooms, lunch duty, recess duty, this duty, that duty, anything they're asked to do. And they do it. We made a lot of progress in this contract in some important areas, including compensation. I look to continue that trend when we reopen this contract. It is a two-year deal, but last year was year number one and this is year number two. And we had a lot of roadblocks in our way, including COVID delayed us a lot. The death of our chief negotiator from AFT sidelined us a little bit. So we look forward to continuing the positive momentum with this contract moving forward and also the other three NTU contracts, including food service secretaries and teachers. So thank you for your consideration on your vote this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Markku. Next up, we have Cara Cantwell, followed by Lou Jarris.
My name is Cara Cantwell and I'm at 8 Chatham Street. I'm going to be honest with all of you tonight and tell you I'm pretty tired of coming to these meetings knowing that what we parents have to say will fall on deaf ears for the most part. It's exhausting. But one thing is for certain, I will never give up on my kids. When you began making medical decisions for our students without parental consent, I don't think you expected or realized all the pushback you would get. But one thing is for sure, you woke a sleeping giant. We parents will not stop fighting for our kids until we get the results that they deserve. They deserve the choice to breathe without the restriction of masks. You can shake your head all you want. That's very rude and unprofessional.
Ms. Cantwell?
It was extremely rude and unprofessional.
First of all, second of all, I was checking to see if what you're speaking of is on the agenda, which it is not. However, I'm going to allow you to continue until your three minutes are up.
You're going to allow me to keep speaking in a public?
I'm sorry, you're breaking the rules of the meeting by speaking of something that is not on the agenda.
I apologize. I looked through the meeting agenda and I thought it was there.
Oh, go ahead.
With you, and I can wait and come back up later if you'd prefer.
No, please continue.
Okay. I can understand someone who's sick putting on a mask in public, but the idea of making someone who's healthy wear a mask is ludicrous. If you don't agree with me, that's fine. It's okay. There are a lot of people who don't agree right now and it's all right. Take the time to look up more information than just what's on the mainstream media. There's a lot of information out there that is more accurate than what's being reported. Take a look at Dr. Fauci's emails for one. He says that wearing a mask will not protect us against the virus. I've heard it put this way. Wearing a mask to protect against a virus is like having a bunch of mosquitoes fly at a chain link fence and expecting that they won't go through. Think about that for a minute. That's how tiny this virus is. These masks have open holes that these tiny little viruses get through. No matter if we're wearing them or not, we are going to be around this virus. I took the time to look at the COVID numbers. I don't like looking at them. I don't like watching the news because it's a lot of negativity. It's a lot of, it could make people feel very down and depressed to hear all of the things that are going on right now and have been for a year and a half. I took the time to look though and looked, and this is what I noticed. In Nashua, we have a population of about 90,323, give or take. And the new cases per 100,000 today were 326.8. That's 0.33% of our population. New cases in the past 14 days, 293. Total active cases, 189. Now, if you look at the percentages of our population that this is affecting, it's less than 1%. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. You all have my email address. I have sent you emails. If that is incorrect, I would love to hear what you have to say and explain how those numbers are figured instead or in a different manner. Because I've not yet heard or seen anywhere where it's explained. So using the math that I learned in high school, I figured it out for myself. And looking around me and seeing what's happening around us, it makes logical sense. There are not a lot of people who are actually sick. In our school district with a little over 11,000 students, we only have about 0.5% of people who are testing positive. Even if we had 100 students test positive, we'd still be 0.9% that were positive. That means 99% of our students are healthy. That's wonderful. Please stop the scare tactics. The majority of our population is healthy, yet our kids have to mask up for school. After school, most of them remove their masks and live mask-free.
Please wrap it up.
Okay, I'm almost done. We attended an athletic event recently and it was wonderful to see that almost everybody there, probably 90% of the people, were mask-free. Kids were sitting right next to each other, leaning on each other, hugging each other, eating food, talking and laughing, and it was awesome. But then they have to go to school and put masks on their faces. How does this make sense? It doesn't make logical sense. Why are we masking healthy people? The last small paragraph I'll finish up with. Our constitutional rights are under attack. Our God-given right to make choices for ourselves, individual choices for ourselves and our families. Never has this ever been so blatant and obvious as it is right now. The right to choose whether to wear a mask is protected by the Constitution. Stop this madness. Make masks optional for our children now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cantwell. Mr. Jarris?
Good evening. Lou Jarris here, 56 Haynes Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And I would echo the para contract to approve. They do, it is a difficult task. It's one that's vital within the schools here. And please give it your all consideration. I do know somebody not in the school district here who's a para and it's an important job. And it's important that we, you know, look at this contract and support them. That helps support their livelihoods. That's going to help support the children, that the students that need this help right now. And thank you for keeping us safe in these schools. And we appreciate that as well. Keeping these students safe and keeping them healthy so when they can return home, they can be that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jarris. And that concludes our public question comment period for this evening. Next up is superintendent's comments. Dr. McKinney.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. As Mr. Richards said earlier, I just want to say congratulations to the 16 of our high school students who are named National Merit Scholar semifinalists. This is an incredible honor and remarkable to have so many of our students among the highest test scores in New Hampshire. Students who take the PSAT may qualify to enter the College Board Competition for these prestigious scholarships. The PSAT is a standardized test that measures reading skills, math problem skills and writing skills. And among the 1.5 million students who take the PSAT each year, about 16,000 are recognized as semifinalists. I believe this year is the highest number of Nashua students named as semifinalists. All the members are of the class of 2022. 13 from South, three from North. And I just want to say congratulations to all those National Merit Scholarship semifinalists for achieving a high level of success. It's pretty amazing. Also, congratulations to Deana Lavoy. She was named the Physical Education Teacher of the Year at New Searls Elementary School. The New Hampshire Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance named Ms. Lavoy the 2021 recipient of the Teacher of the Year for Elementary Physical Education Award. She'll be recognized at the Association's conference in November. And she has a long, outstanding career in promoting physical and emotional well-being of her students and her support for the overall health of her students is truly commendable. So congratulations to Deana Lavoy. Just two pieces of good news tonight. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McKinney. Do we have any board response to the superintendent's comments? Yes, Ms. Oden?
I will just speak for a minute. When I was at Amherst Street, Deana Lavoy was part-time because she went to several other schools. But she did an absolutely fantastic job. She had a rack with oodles of sneakers on them and she'd sanitized them. And what she did with our kids, a lot of our kids didn't have yards, and she did jump rope with them. We had a jump ropeathon. And I mean, the kids would be out in the playground doing double dutch. I mean, things that I remembered I used to be able to do. So she just wasn't absolutely, she deserves this five times over. So congratulations to her and it's nice to see good people recognized in what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Yes, Ms. Dean?
I would like to thank Dr. McKinney for bringing Nashville High School South here and for the wonderful, the most impressive thing to me was that they're giving back. They're not just leading by example, but they're taking their time and making an effort. And the kids respond to kids better than they do adults. There's something, I don't know, that it's like a magic. So it was very touching and I so appreciate that part of this meeting. It sets a wonderful tone for the meeting and I appreciate that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Okay, I don't see any other hands.
Can I make a comment? Not a president?
Yes, please, Mr. Guarino.
Yes, I would like to congratulate the students at Nashua High South for having the highest test scores. There are some people who say our test scores in our public schools are going down and here is proof positive that that's just not the case in our high schools. I want to congratulate those students. I also want to congratulate the students at Nashua High South for their presentation today. Both of my children went to Nashua High South. And I just want to make a plug for the arts because my son was in Little Shop of Horrors a few years ago before he graduated. My daughter was in Addams Family. They put on some great plays. It's a great place for families to go and watch these plays. Unfortunately, they couldn't get Fiddler on the Roof going because of COVID, but I hope that they begin again putting on plays at Nashville High South. I'm sure they will. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to Nashville High South and go Panthers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guarino. All right, so I'll just echo everybody. Congratulations to all of the Merit Scholar finalists and also to Ms. Lavoy. If I recall, she was in the paper last year for something similar regarding instituting, it was like a sitting bike or a standing bike in Sunset Heights. Dr. Sarpy is nodding at me as though this sounds familiar. But she has, she's really amazing and I'm glad she was recognized for the work that she does. So, okay. Next up on our agenda is the student member of the board comments. Okay, Ms. Burnell?
Recently, we had our Battle of the Bridge games and I have to say, South is pretty successful. I can't say the same for North though. Sorry, Spencer. But I had the pleasure of attending a couple of those games and the stands were packed and everybody was just glad and excited to be there and it was such a great, it was the high school experience. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burnell. Mr. Dunn?
Although we may have fallen short on a couple of big games, we did have way better student sections. So our school spirit this year is amazing. And I think as we've seen, you know, coming back into this year, a little sense of normalcy, that really, you know, that true just high school experience. And it's good to see everyone back and just excited to be, you know, back at school. And I'll take pride, you know, North pride. This year, our student sections are great. I think we had a great time. And I'm looking forward to the other two Battle of the Bridges this year. And with that, we have, as part of Battle of the Bridge, every year we do Spirit Weeks. So I know this year that we had a great Spirit Week themes for both North and South. And it was really good to just see everyone together and back to some sense of normalcy. And it was really good to be back.
All right, thank you both. I appreciate it. And I have to say that the Battle of the Bridge stuff was really fun this time. So thank you, everybody who participated in that. Okay, next up on the list is our committee on, let's see, Committee on Finance was canceled, but we'll see them next time.
Can I just jump in here and let everybody know? The next date is October 12th, 6:00 p.m., right in this room.
Okay, thank you. I was going to ask you that. So October 12th, 6:00 p.m. for the next Committee on Finance. Committee on Policy, Ms. Bishop?
We have a couple of things to do. This is exciting. So we have a couple of policies to go over. Get organized a little bit. Okay. I have to take notes too. So the Committee on Policy reviewed several policies. We've obviously had a board and a committee policy for the duration of the school district. And we have many policies that are from the 80s and thought we would tackle them because we're supposed to review them every several years. So the first one that we're going to be talking about, making the recommendation to rescind policy 2410 in regards to guidance services. Looking for that motion.
So moved?
Thank you.
You make the motion and then someone seconds you.
My brain is not working today.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Did anyone have any questions or comments on
There was a week.
the motion to rescind policy 2410 guidance services? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I was just wondering if Ms. Bishop would give us an overview of the policy, just like a little brief?
So we're looking to rescind guidance services because the information that's in the policy is absorbed into the handbooks and there are several things within the policy that guidance doesn't do anymore.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Mr. Guarino?
No, no questions.
Okay. So, oh, that's hard to do it and call the roll. Could you call the roll, please, Ms. Bishop?
So Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, I wanted to mention to you, since the policy meeting, I heard that we can't both rescind and approve a new policy in one motion. We need two motions because there can't be no policy on the books. So apologies, I thought it was brilliant, but that's why it's this way.
Okay. So the second policy that we're looking to is I move to approve policy GBL in regards to length of service. I second.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dean? Any questions or comments?
And I'll do the roll call for that. In regards to, geez Louise, to approve policy GBL. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do you want me to take the notes?
No, it's fine. It's all written here. It's just all this stuff. Okay, so we have a policy on the books. So now we're looking to rescind policy 8240.2. I move to rescind policy 82402 in regards to length of service. And really all we did was we updated it to the new, the new way that we do things, the numeric, the alphabetical, not the numeric.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Ms. Dean? Questions or comments? I don't see any. So now roll.
So Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
So the next, I move to rescind policy 8242.1.
I'll second that. Okay, questions, comments? Ms. Brown?
I'm sorry, actually, I was looking at the next policy. I apologize for reading the wrong one. Sorry.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
The next policy, I move to approve policy GCCBD, Extended Sick Leave for District-Wide Non-Affiliated Full-Time Administrative and/or Certified Personnel.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Zee. Questions, comments? All right, roll call.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dur Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next policy is I move to rescind policy 8242.2, which is the same policy. We were just renaming it.
Okay, second?
I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Oden.
Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next policy, I move to approve policy GHP, Procedure for Reporting Teacher Absences.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Zee. Questions, comments? Okay.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next policy, I move to approve policy GHP, Procedure for Reporting Teacher Absences.
I second.
Did we miss one?
I don't know. To rescind policy 8249?
I think we just voted on GHP.
Right.
And then we missed rescinding policy 8249. What did you say?
CCB? No, did I not check this out? Hold on.
I skipped one, I believe.
I just marked that off. Looking to rescind policy 8249?
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. It was renamed. It was just absences and it was renamed to Procedure for Reporting Teacher Absences?
Right, I'm sorry. I thought we had moved on to a different one. So now you're on.
Recommendation to rescind policy 8249.
I thought we, we missed Recommendation to Rescind Policy 8242.1.2, Extended Sick Leave for District-Wide Unaffiliated.
Oh, she got that one. We did that one.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
That was seconded by Ms. Oden.
Okay. I thought it was this.
So now, let's go back. So now Ms. Bishop has just moved to rescind policy 8249 on absences because we just approved the new one.
Uh huh.
So I guess I'll second that.
Well, Ms. Zee seconded it.
Oh, good.
I thought we didn't vote on the other one. We start, we started talking about it and did we vote?
Yeah, because I don't remember you talking about administrative and all certified personnel. I just don't remember you saying that.
I'm talking about Procedure for Reporting Teacher Absences. That's the one I didn't think.
That's the one we just did.
But did we vote on it or did we just discuss it?
I thought we just voted on.
Nobody, I marked everyone off.
Nobody had any questions or comments on it.
Okay.
This one quickly.
On GHP.
Apparently shouldn't go.
Go ahead.
We need like a court reporter to like read back the minutes to us.
Okay.
All right, is everybody on the same page? Does anyone have any objections to the fact that, to the approval of GHP that they meant to make?
Okay. Remember I went questions, comments, concerns and no one said anything and I went right into roll call?
Right, yeah. Too fast. All right, so now you, you have moved to rescind policy 8249. And that was seconded by Ms. Zee?
Uh huh.
Okay. And we don't have any problems with that or questions or comments? All right, so now we can go into that roll call.
Okay, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero. Okay, the next motion, I'm going slow. I move to approve policy, proposed policy CCB, Line and Staff Relations.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zee. Any questions or comments? I don't see anybody, so go ahead and call the roll.
So Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero. Okay. That is it. It's a whirlwind experience up here in Policy Committee.
All right, I don't have my calendar on me.
And I have to say that we did that whole meeting in 25 minutes.
I know.
The other week, so I feel like we should get some sort of award for that.
And we had some discussions, too. It wasn't like just straight through.
Yeah.
It was very, very concise. Okay, I don't have my calendar on me.
The next meeting is October 19th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to back up for a second because when Mrs. Johnson said that her next meeting for finance was on October the 12th at 6:00 p.m., on our bottom of our agenda, it says the BOE meeting is Monday, October 12th at 6:00 p.m. Now, October the 12th is a Tuesday, so it sounds like that should be Monday, the 11th, even though it's Columbus Day. Does anyone have any objection to that?
I believe the finance meeting is on Wednesday, the 13th.
I'm so confused.
Right, yes. They, I think they put everything on there and then they realized we celebrate Columbus Day on the 11th, so they moved everything out a day on the week. That's why.
What have you got, Ms. Brown?
I think that on the online calendar, it already has the BOE meeting moved to Tuesday. The finance is Wednesday and then curriculum evaluations is next week. So I think there, it might be a misprint on the agenda.
Okay, so we will follow up on that, but in the meantime, we think it's Tuesday, the 12th for BOE and then Wednesday, the 13th for finance. And then, Ms. Johnson, can you follow up with Ms. Kinsella? If that does not work for your finance and operations meeting?
I think it will probably be okay. Oh, no, I have something scheduled for that day.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have to see if maybe we can do it on a Thursday, if that works for everybody.
Okay, so I would say speak with Mr. Donovan and Ms. Kinsella and see if we can make everything work for everybody.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks for your patience. Okay, sorry, everybody. I hate it when you have that like little, like that sounds familiar. And it wasn't for finance that it sounded familiar. Okay, thank you for your patience, Ms. Brown, Committee and on Curriculum and Evaluation.
Thank you. So we met on September 20th and we have a couple of motions to approve. First, I move to approve the proposed Rebuson Associates contract for professional development of paraprofessionals in the amount of $25,000 using the 2021 Title II A funding.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay, I don't see anybody wanting to speak on it. When you're ready, Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, I move to approve the proposed Mount Prospect Academy contract for school-based counseling programs in the amount of $500,000 using ESER grant funding.
I second that. Okay, thank you.
Can we just get a, can we get, so how, will that be all of the schools? Will that, will be sufficient to cover all the schools?
Yes, we're working on, we're working on some plans right now. We're collaborating with all of our guidance counselors and social workers from around the district to be able to figure out exactly how we can create a flow chart to make sure that we meet students' needs across the district.
Thank you, that sounds wonderful.
Anyone else? Ms. Oden?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't watch the curriculum evaluation meeting. But did you have multiple recommendations for this company?
Yes, so Mount Prospect Academy is, it's, it's an organization or it's a, it's an organization that provides services all across the state, also in Massachusetts. I, I believe that we also, that we already do have some services from them, mostly sort of residential services for our students. But the difference with this particular program is that they'll be able to provide services in schools, hopefully, in response to whatever the students' needs are.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question and I'm asking this because it's half a million dollars. Are you going to ask feedback from those people who, who are in our district, who are participating in the program? Will they, will they be able to give feedback as to how effective they thought, they think that the program was for them?
Absolutely. So Mr. Parker and I already met with all of the lead guidance folks from our district. We also met with some of our community partners like NAMI and other organizations that provide services for our students so that we can have wraparound services. We have a subsequent meeting on, I believe it's October 19th, 18th or 19th, to get everybody together again at district office and then we will have subsequent meetings after that to get feedback.
Okay, thank you. And can I just ask one more? Will those results be shared with the board?
Absolutely, if you're looking for some feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Can, can I just, and this, I'm going back to the other one just to say that I was, it's also nice to see that the paraprofessionals are going to, we, we, there's always a need for our teachers to be encouraged with that kind of thing to me. So I'm, I'm glad to see both of these. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. When you're ready, Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now that we've been playing with calendars, Ms. Brown, do you have your next meeting?
Yes, I believe our next calendar, our next meeting is on October 18th.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next is the Committee on Human Resources. Ms. Zee?
Yes, we had, we had our meeting earlier tonight and so we need to make a motion to waive the requirements for the meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion is to waive the requirements as they met earlier this evening? And I'm sorry, was it Ms. Timmons or Ms. Oden? Doesn't matter?
I amended and I just seconded.
Okay.
That doesn't matter.
No, you did.
Yes, I did, but.
No, I meant for the second. I apologize.
I seconded.
Okay, when you're ready, Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Zee?
What? No, Ms. Bishop to call the roll?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
And the committee would like to make a motion that we approve the personnel recommendations revised September 27th, 2021.
I second that.
Any questions or concerns? Okay, I don't see anybody.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. And the next HR will be likely immediately preceding the next Board of Ed meeting, which we just determined will be on Tuesday, 10/12. So, in this room. Okay, so liaison reports. Does anyone have any liaison reports? No? The Joint Special School Building Committee, woo, met on Thursday of last week. They have received the approval of the Conservation Commission for the plans for the new middle school and so they go before the Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe it's on October the, now I'm forgetting, 8, 7, I don't recall. But the next time the Zoning Board of Appeals meets, which is in early October. Mr. Parker, do you remember what day?
I have a many of the notes, but not off the top.
Okay, so hopefully that will be also successful. And the other information to note is that the furniture for fairgrounds will be arriving this weekend and next, so another couple of weeks and Fairgrounds will have all their new furniture.
Very good.
So, which is excellent. And they are having a consultant of some sort that is important go through and make sure that all of the HVAC systems are balanced in Fairgrounds, which is something you do with the plans and then something that you do when a building is complete. So before the winter hits, every room will be appropriately warm and not have hot spots and cold spots, so that's also good news. Am I forgetting anything else? Anybody who's on that committee? No, I don't think so. Doctor, I'm sorry, Mr. Parker? Okay, great. All right, so the next item on our agenda is unfinished business. So, we received a COVID-19 update this afternoon from Nashua Public Health. Ms. Bagley wasn't able to be here today, but this is directly from the website with the COVID-19 dashboard, so it's accessible to everyone. I'm not going to read all of the information on it, but what is important to us this evening, I think being the school district, is that Nashua continues to be in substantial transmission. Our new infections per 100,000 is 326.8. Our test positivity rate is 5.9%. We have 189 active cases. We continue to stay at 51.5 fully vaccinated in Nashua. Let's see, what else? The state level for schools continues to be substantial. There's 159 total onsite cases in the schools across the state, and there's 28 clusters. The Nashua community level is substantial. There's nine total onsite active cases in schools and one cluster onsite in schools. In the past seven days, we've had 49 cases in the 0 to 18-year range, and that represents a 20% increase over the past seven days. She then provides the website information, and I think that is it for that. Next, Dr. McKinney has included in our packets, it says "Health and Safety Update." Is that this? This is very big.
It was referencing two things. One, the call last week with Dr. Chan and his team at the state level, so this is a copy of the PowerPoint, and then I also included a memo in there that spoke to health and safety as a reopening update.
Okay. That's a lot. All right, so, this is really big, but I think there were a couple of things that I think are general comments about prevention strategies. Is there anything that you wish to share with the board regarding your experience with Dr. Chan on that conference call, Dr. McKinney?
Yes, I would say the main things are the prevention strategies that are listed on a couple of different slides. Everything from vaccination to ventilation, trying to work on those nine things, from mask-wearing to distancing, screening, testing. We had a great meeting today with four elementary schools. The vendor will be looking to visit those four schools and move forward. That testing at the elementary level, everything from handwashing, isolation, quarantine, cleaning and disinfection. I would say all in all, there wasn't a lot to report out that was different in here. I did include at the end of the memo the recommended public health indoor mask matrix for making recommendations.
We've switched from this PowerPoint that you've included to your memo. Yes?
Well, yes. This was included in the PowerPoint, and somehow it's attached to here, so I apologize. Just trying to make it more challenging. But this was the guidance that came from the state public health after August 9th, after we had our reopening meeting. The main differences with this here are, you could see around the number of cases, clusters, and the level of community transmission. An update did go out today in terms of the number of cases in the district. It did go up by one from 25 to 26, and we are reporting one cluster at one school. So, that is a change since the last time. So, over the last few weeks, we've seen numbers go from 13 to 10 to 25 now to 26.
And that's cases within our schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not other schools in Nashua, just Nashua Public School District?
Just here for the NSD, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I have a question for Dr. McKinney.
Yes, please go ahead.
Dr. McKinney, is it fair to say that in every single category that I see here, there's an uptick in every category in the infection?
If that's what the PowerPoint says, yes. I didn't get a chance to review all of it.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that. So, our levels of COVID is definitely going up. I know it is. I mean, you know, it's not a fear factor, it's a factor. And I just want the public to know that we do take this seriously, and we do listen to the health advisors and the scientists because we're not that. So, we have to take the recommendation of the experts. So, and what I read is that we have a huge increase in COVID in this city. We're not talking about the rest of the country, we're talking about in this city. So, and this school too, and there is an uptick in COVID.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. I did have... Oh, go ahead, Dr. McKinney.
I was just going to show... The other piece of feedback we received from parents is that it's hard to get tested. If kids are sent home, they're symptomatic, so we're trying to stand up the SAS testing that will be available, and then we have another free program from the state that the nurses can give, which is the 15-minute test that we're working on too. So, trying to expand capacity. Parents are calling, saying they're frustrated, "My kid was sent home," you know, and then now we're getting into a season where there's a lot of allergies, other bugs going around in terms of viruses, and kids are presenting with symptoms. So, just want the public to know that we hear you, we're working on responding because it can be challenging to get in line for a test, it can take a couple of days, and then meanwhile, the kids are missing school. So, we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yep, one second. I found that myself. Last week, my daughter had to see her pediatrician about a non-COVID matter, and we couldn't get an appointment at all. They ended up sending us all the way out to Milford, which is not far, but just to be able to see a doctor about her non-COVID issue. So, that was frustrating. So, I imagine all of the parents with symptomatic kids are overly frustrated as well.
No transportation.
And no transportation. Imagine if we didn't have transportation to Milford. Go ahead, Ms. Ziem, I'm sorry.
Some of you may or may not know that I just came through COVID. I'm safe now, but it was, to say the least, it was horrifying. It was scary. I live in a two-family. When you live in a two-family, as many of our families do, or when you have a single family and you have three or four families living in that single-family home, it is impossible, absolutely impossible, to social distance. You cannot do it. So, there were 10 of us in the house, and nine of us ended up getting it. I just want to tell you that, you know, those of us... I'm in a two-family. I'm not complaining about living in a two-family. What I'm trying to say is that those of you who are lucky enough to have a great, big, beautiful home, and I certainly don't envy you, I'm not belittling you for that, I'm glad, this great country where we can all do that. But what I'm saying is, I think it's imperative that as a community, we remember that not everybody lives in the same lifestyle. Not everybody has, you know, a separate bedroom for every child. Sometimes you'll see three or four children in one bedroom, in one bedroom. So, how do you keep those children separated? And I will also suggest to you that there are parents who have... And my heart breaks for those people, I tell you honestly. You have people who have to go to work, but now everybody in their house has COVID. Is it possible, is it conceivable, that sometimes these children come to school and they bring COVID with them? I don't think there's any question that it is. And is it also possible that now you have a child in these classrooms with COVID, and if they didn't have that mask on, there are at-risk people who will come in contact with them and get that? And because they get it, they could end up being the one who goes to be with the Lord. So, I beg you all to try to think about your neighbors, to think that it is a bigger problem than just ourselves. I found it very, very hard, I can tell you, to be... We had one out of the whole household who didn't get it, and we thought he was asymptomatic. But we took him, and he... A miracle, he didn't get it. But I'm just saying that who can account or reason for it? I don't think anybody can, so I think we have to give... We have to give our neighbors the benefit of the doubt, and we have to pray and work as a team. Try to be... Mrs. Cantwell, I was moved by your... I understand how you feel. My heart breaks. I don't want to wear this mask tonight anymore than you want your children to wear it during the day. But I have to tell you that as a board member, if I pass... If this board passes an ordinance that we should wear a mask, and then I don't wear it, what message am I sending to the children in my school? I'm saying to them, "The rules are good for you, don't you break those rules." But they're not good for me because I'm a board member? I can't do that. And I'm not casting aspersions on those... Every man lives with his own conscience. I'm just saying that this is... It breaks my heart to see us divide our city, our community, our schools, our children. If ever we needed to be a team and try to work together, I beg you all, let's try to be nice to each other. And yes, we can disagree, it's all right to disagree. I think it's what's made our country great. If we lose the ability to do it, though, in a kind way, we are not the nation that we have always been. I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ziem. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Dr. McKinney, I just have a couple of questions here. When we're testing the children, the nurses testing them with the swaps, is that what they're doing? Do they have a kit or something?
First of all, no one's testing anyone yet. Second of all, it's voluntary. It requires consent, so if they would like to opt-in to either program, we need parental consent.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it was kind of a little bit vague, and I went through this whole thing, I marked this whole thing up today, so I'm kind of...
It wasn't in the presentation.
Right. And so, and I was kind of looking at... I wish the graphs weren't cut off here because it kind of showed how the graphs were going in different parts. They were up, they were down, they looked like they were climbing a little bit, but not like in January, the way it peaked here. And we've got some other peaks in here, really high peaks, March of 2020, and, you know, we have some high peaks here.
I can send you the link, and you can print it out any which way you choose.
Yeah, I'm not going to print it out, I'll just kind of look at it on the computer. Also, have we done anything? Because I know I asked at the last meeting about the medical exemption and the religious exemptions. Have a plan come in place for any of that, for religious or medical, if the students? Because I know that I've heard some parents who, students have asthma, and in the gym with the masks, and where are our students going to be able to, if they can't breathe, be able to take the masks off? You know, that's what my concern is, because there are students that can't breathe, there are students that have panic attacks with the masks. So, I just want to see a plan in place for students that if they need to take the masks off during the day, it's not an uncommon, reasonable accommodation for students if they need a five-minute break to get the masks off to breathe because it might get moist. I rode by one of the schools earlier today, and I saw students out, some of them had masks on, some didn't, because with the mask on, I figured the parents who want the masks on, the students, and that's all well and good, that's their option. I still think that option should be across here. I hope these numbers are going to come down. We have over 90,000 people in the city, how fast have we grown here? So, if you... Again, if you multiply it out, it's less than a percent. I don't want to see anybody get sick. I think I had COVID of 2020, in March of 2020. I was sick, I got over it, thank God, but I just do a lot of stuff with my body. But I'm just concerned with some of the students that need those mask breaks, and I'd like to see if... If we're not going to do a policy, we have to have a plan in place because it's not really quite there yet. And so, I'm asking the board to please have something in place here. So, parents understand if their student needs a break, if they have special needs. I don't know if it has to go through an IEP, if they're 504, probably not, but parents have to be able to understand that their students can have that break if they so need it. So, all right, thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. McKinney.
So, as I wrote in the memo, all in all, the kids have been fantastic. I'm really very proud of our students and staff. I spent a half-day at both high schools, and kids are incredibly compliant. All middle and high school are reporting that kids just need a reminder to pull their mask up, and as they talk or discuss, their mask falls down. Kids do get mask breaks, just like adults do. If there are questions regarding student needs, as I addressed in the memo, it's best received at the school level, and the administrators will respond. We provide support and guidance, we're administering the policies that are in place. If the board feels like they're not happy with the policy in place, then the board can amend or rescind the policy and create a new one. It's the administration's responsibility to administer the policies that are in place. So, with over 260 policies in the policy book, those are the ones that we provide guidance and administration to. All in all, again, the kids are amazing. They're happy to be back in school, they do a great job. I've sat in classes. Some have more spacing than others, some are, you know, a high volume of kids just based on the course that's there. But again, it's not something that can go in a memo because it all depends on the student, their background, the services they're getting. Again, just like a lot of things, the building knows the kids best. So, if there's a concern, raise it with the administration. If they're not getting the relief that they want, or it's not being addressed, address it to one of the assistant superintendents or the director of student services.
Are we doing anything for religious exempts, or no?
Again, the board makes policy, the administration administers the policy. If you have questions regarding the administration of the policy, modify the policy. I'm not going to give out information regarding how many or what we're doing, but it's the administration's job to comply with all state and federal regulations and laws and policies, and I can assure the board as a whole, we're not doing anything different than any other school district. I've talked to numerous superintendents who are in the same place we are, and they're doing the same thing we are.
Okay, because I asked a while ago, and that's okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. McKinney, so attached to your motion, but incorrectly, it was this chart that should have been in the PowerPoint. And then you handed out to us this evening, this chart. And I guess my question is, what... Yeah. What is it that you would like us to do? What is your recommendation regarding this chart? Is it like an FYI? Where did it come from? I have lots of questions about the chart.
So... Yep, sorry, not trying to make it difficult. There was a motion to adapt the matrix that was presented in the original return-to-school plan. So, this was the matrix that was presented on August 9th. This matrix no longer exists, so we had to go pull it from the minutes of that meeting on August 9th.
Oh, okay.
The recommended matrix that's provided now is the DHHS matrix that's provided by Dr. Chan and his team.
Okay. Thank you.
One last thing. This matrix has since been revised to look similar to this one here. This one was previously put together by area superintendents in the North Country to have some guidance going into the fall and reopening before the public health guidance came out.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sorry about that.
Note that I noticed it was dated August 6th, and I just was trying to figure out where it fit into our discussion this evening. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Dr. McKinney regarding the PowerPoint from Dr. Chan? Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I actually wasn't sure which one of these was actually the recommendation for your calendar. Do you actually... I understand that this was what we had originally discussed, and this is what's now. What is your recommendation? Is it to adopt this later version, the bigger version?
Again, included in the memo is consensus from the administrative team at the secondary is to continue doing what we're doing right now.
So, and then I saw, in regards to this that was attached to the memo, I had two questions. It said, "exceptions can be made for classrooms or schools that have achieved a high vaccination rate. For example, the high school or other prevention measures are strictly implemented, such as six feet of physical distancing." Is there any definition of what a high vaccination rate is?
I don't recall what the level would be. The challenge with that is that while we can ask people their vaccination status, they don't have to necessarily disclose it. So, for us to obtain that information and put this, that kind of clause in place would be certainly challenging.
Okay. And then actually, that was my follow-up. And then actually, that was my follow-up question was who's going to be maintaining the vaccination records? Is it the school nurse, the classrooms, the teachers? What's going on with that? So we can't actually ask, so it's actually kind of hard to apply that clause.
We can actually ask, but they don't have to answer, which is really the key part.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Okay. So the next. Sorry, I lost my place again. I apologize.
Tabled motion.
Yes. So the next item on the agenda, under unfinished business, is the tabled motion, reading everyone, including board members, wear masks at all board meetings until COVID numbers indicate when it is safe to stop wearing masks. And the amendment to that motion that says to amend the motion to adopt the matrix presented by Dr. McKinney in the original return to school plan. So at this time, I would be looking for a motion to take these items off the table so that we can work on them.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Seem and Ms. Gilio. Okay. I don't believe that there is any debate regarding tabling and untabling. So if we could have the roll call when you're ready, Ms. Bishop?
On the motion to untable the tabled motions, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
We're, okay.
Mrs. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes as are untabled now.
Okay. So we were on the amendment to adopt the matrix presented by Dr. McKinney in the original return to school plan. I believe that that was by Ms. Brown. And it had been seconded by Ms. Johnson. Is that correct?
I don't remember who seconded it.
I don't remember who seconded it.
I think I did. I just watched part of it today.
Okay. I don't think it matters at this point, but just for clarity. So on that motion to adopt the original matrix as part of this discussion on board members wearing masks, would anyone like to speak any further on that? Well, yes, Ms. Bishop.
The original matrix, Dr. McKinney just said that he was updating to the current one, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we can't refer to the original, the original matrix in the return to school plan. So we can't, we can't do that.
Okay.
Unless we look to update the matrix.
Ms. Brown?
We could, in fact, still keep the matrix that was recommended initially. And this other one has just been, it's a slightly different version that was provided by the state, but neither are required at this time, if I'm correct. Is that correct, Dr. McKinney? Neither of these belong with any kind of state requirements. So we could, in fact, adopt this matrix that you initially had provided with for us. So that would be acceptable. So we can still, in fact, adopt this matrix.
That's correct. We could, if we wanted to. So I, I think we ought to, we need to vote on that amendment before we would talk about doing a different amendment because that depends on whether this one passes.
Can we, can we, before we vote on either of them, can, as you know, I've been, I've missed some of the meetings. I've missed a lot of, and I want to be sure that I know exactly what I'm voting on, you know, when you.
Yep. So the motion, the amendment was to change. So originally, there was a motion by Ms. Timmons, and I believe it was seconded by Ms. Gilio, to require everyone, including board members, to wear a mask at all board members until the COVID numbers indicate when it is safe to stop wearing masks. And then Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Johnson, amended that motion or made a motion to amend it, to adopt the matrix presented by Dr. McKinney in the original return to school plan. So that amendment would say then that the, that everyone, including board members, wear a mask at all board members based on this matrix, the one that Dr. McKinney handed out this evening, with minimal, moderate, and substantial levels. Does that make sense?
I think I understand it, yes.
Okay. I'm also saying it slowly for my own.
Yes.
For my own benefit so that I understand what I'm voting on. Okay. Yes, Ms. Brown?
May I advocate for the amendment?
Sure.
I think it's pretty, you know, I actually think that mask-wearing should be individual choice. However, I understand that there are still a lot of people that don't agree with that opinion. I actually think this decision matrix is a really good compromise for, for the people who believe both ends of those spectrums. So I guess in the spirit of compromise, I think this would be a way that we could maybe come to an agreement, that there's some kind of metric in place that, a measurable way, that eventually people could have choices. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say that last meeting, someone brought up that ADA was abolished because of COVID. But I went to council and I asked, and I was told the Americans with Disability Act remains in full force and effect and has never been temporarily suspended during the COVID-19 pandemic. So we can have that on the table. So here's the problem that I see, a couple of problems here. Number one, people who have a disability can't wear masks. You're going to tell them they have to wear masks. You have to make reasonable accommodations. Secondly, you know, I'm just, I'm fed up of being attacked all the time because I don't wear masks and because it's always brought up, what about her employer? What about her employer? Well, that's nobody's business. But I want to bring something back to the meeting of August 23rd, 2021. Ms. Gilio, am I pronouncing your name correct?
Gilio.
Gilio, I keep getting it confused.
Doesn't count.
That's okay. We're friends, I think. As I'm entering the building tonight, I saw the sign saying that masks are required. We're eight days away from the beginning of school when everyone is going to be wearing masks. And yet, we're sitting in a boardroom with two unmasked people and I'm not comfortable with that. Ms. Johnson then said, first of all, when we took the vote, we did not include board members in the vote. If I remember correctly, it was just students and administration. I believe school staff. So that's number one. Number two, you can't ask anyone if they have a medical condition. And if you want to talk about anybody's job, day job, let's not talk about that right now either. So if I'm, so if, in fact, you want to kind of point fingers at anybody, I don't have a problem bringing in a medical letter. And I shouldn't have to bring in a medical letter, nor am I going to do this. Because the law, I don't have to disclose anything. You want to talk about accommodations, reasonable accommodations. And being a board, you have to uphold reasonable accommodations under ADA. Or the board could get sued probably with EEOC coming in on this. So let's not go into this. And the reason, because even though we're elected, we're still employees of the city. I already checked that out. And so Thursday night, where am I going with this really? Thursday night, Joint Special School Building Committee meeting. I was a little bit shocked and appalled from what I saw. Mr. Dowd was sitting here and he was asking, do I have to put a mask on if none of the kids are in school? He took his mask off. As a matter of fact, he did not wear his mask. Remember the people who were here? Okay. And then Alderman Wiltshire took her mask off. And you know what it gets, and she did, I got the pictures right here.
I'm sorry, I'm shaking my head because I found it disturbing that she did that.
Okay. And you know what just bothers me so much about this? And I know I'm going to be featured on Facebook again tomorrow. And when I say I don't have Facebook, anything, oh, yeah, I've got it all printed out now. I'm the star of Facebook. That I'm a horrible person because when I went to a meeting on Thursday, I didn't have a mask on and I said a week ago Thursday to Alderman Wiltshire, I can't because of medical, I cleared it with counsel. And Dr. McKinney knows it because he's got a letter. So I don't have to disclose any of this, really don't. And it's really getting annoying here that I'm the focus of attack on this whole thing because even that night, someone talked about my employer again. So I guess what bothers me, and I don't want to do this, but I have to, pictures of people that are board members that are sitting in here with no masks on before the meeting last Thursday, and I'm the one who gets attacked here. You sat there with not a mask on before the meeting started. That's one. I'm the one who's attacked about this. Mr. Smith, I don't want to get him into trouble, no mask. Okay? We're going to go with this? We're going to keep going after me? I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Seem. Hold on, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Seem, did you have a point of privilege or a point of order?
Not a point of order. I'm certainly happy to hear what Mrs. Johnson has to say. I guess I, there are two points that become paramount in my mind, anyway. When you, when you, we are not enforcers. We are not the police. You make rules. And if Mrs. Johnson says to me, I'm sick and I can't wear this mask, then I have to accept that and take her word that she's being honest. That's in her conscience. And so if she tells me that, I believe her. I do. Having said that, I also have to give the courtesy to the same adults who might come in here. And some of them may abuse it and some may not, but it's not up to me. We can't be each other's conscience. But what we can do is we can make guidelines that are reasonable based on the greater good. And then we can hope that our community and our team will come together as a team and work on it as a team and try to do the best we can. But enforcers, I don't think that's our job. I also think that if there are people who are truly, who have, it depends on how severe your medical problem is. But Mr. Guarino is on the phone tonight. And, you know, if you were really, you know, if you, that is an option, is all I'm saying. And so, but I, again, I don't think that we can be common enforcers and I don't think that's the purpose of making this rule. And Mrs. Johnson, if I offended you, it was not intended.
No, it had nothing to do with you, Ms. Seem.
Well, I mean, I just want you to know. I think that when we, when we offend each other, we build barriers. We're not building bridges for our students, for our staff, for our community. And it is my prayer that we will come together as a team and work with each other with reason and in good, and give each other the benefit of the doubt. Because I cannot be the conscience for each of you. I have trouble being my own conscience. I tell you that honestly. You know, do I ever want to break rules? I don't know anybody that hasn't on occasion been tempted to do those things. But I like to think that the majority of the time, as an adult, I behave responsibly and I do, I try to do what is in the greater good. And so that, those are my two points. Thank you.
May I finish up here?
No, you may not, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Seem. Ms. Johnson, excuse me, you are entirely out of order. We have policies that say that you do not attack personnel at this table. If you wish to have a discussion about personnel, then you ask for a non-public session and we are happy to grant you a non-public session. You are risking us being sued because you are upset and offended and it is completely unacceptable.
Excuse me, Ms. Raymond.
You may mention other public figures. You may even attack your fellow board members, though it is against our policies, as you have pointed out at every single meeting as of late. However, you may not attack personnel.
I didn't attack any personnel.
You have.
Who did I attack, Ms. Raymond?
I'm not going to repeat the name of a person. However.
I did not attack anybody.
No?
No, I did not.
You didn't mention anything about personnel not performing the way that you felt that they should?
No, I didn't.
Or following policies?
No, I didn't. Could you tell me what did I do? I said that I gave my medical letter to Dr. McKinney.
Dr. McKinney?
And he, and it's confidential.
Five-minute recess. And we will discuss this.
Fine, let's do non-public.
Fine.
Go into non-public.
RSA 91A32A.
Had nothing to do with Dr. McKinney.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All, oh, roll call, please. RSA 92A32A by Ms. Johnson, seconded by, I'm sorry, did I second it or did you?
I did.
Ms. Bishop.
Still have to take notes. Hold on.
We have to vote and then turn off the recording.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Brown says no?
Yep.
Okay. Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It is 7:50 PM. We are now in non-public. If you could please turn off the recording. Okay, we are back in public at 8:15 PM. Thank you all very much for your patience. We were discussing, yes, Ms. Johnson?
I just would like to apologize. I'd like to apologize to the employee that I mentioned his name tonight. It was not meant in any disrespect tonight, so I just want to apologize.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we were discussing the amendment to the motion. Did anyone else have anything else regarding the amendment to the motion?
So would you read it?
Yes. The, I'm going to read the whole thing. So the original motion said, everyone, including board members, wear a mask at all board meetings until COVID numbers indicate when it is safe to stop wearing masks. The amendment is to amend the motion to adopt the matrix presented by Dr. McKinney in the original return to school plan. Thank you. Which is that one that Ms. Gilio is holding up. And so I guess my question is, there's some question of whether or not passing the amendment would then adopt this matrix only for everyone and board members at board meetings or if it would apply to the entire school district? My interpretation would be because it's an amendment to a motion, speaking of board members and board meetings, that it would only apply to board meetings. I understand other people feel differently, so I feel that we need to get an answer to that before we take a vote.
I was going to say, it's the greater question, do we want it to apply to everybody or do we just want to limit it?
Yes.
And so I would ask, Dr., I would like to hear Dr. McKinney's take on that. Am I out of order?
No. Go ahead, Dr. McKinney.
So the question is whether we should adopt this matrix for students and staff? Is that what the question is?
So the question was, the way that the amendment is worded leaves it ambiguous whether adopting the amendment and then passing the motion would make this applicable to everyone or only for board meetings. And Ms. Seem would like to know, if I can paraphrase, if you would support adopting this in either circumstance?
What would be your preference is what I'm asking.
So I'm certainly invested in these students and staff and continuing what we're doing now. And changing anything without public health's recommendation is something I could not support. Certainly within the board's purview to make motions relative to board meetings, but, you know, it's challenging for the public to come to the meetings and I would hate to put people in a situation around those, you know, motions and. And I would hate to put people in a situation around those, you know, motions and attending to the meetings. What I'm seeing from the numbers is that we're continuing to be in a place where the recommended prevention strategies that are from public health are in place until we get a place that transmission comes to a lower level. So right now, I would continue doing what we're doing at the school district.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Ziem.
I'm a little slow, so bear with me, please. I apologize. So you are saying that you want to limit it to students and staff and not go, am I misunderstanding that or am I understanding?
I'm understanding that.
So right now, the motion, the policy of the board is students and staff will wear masks indoors and on school buses. I'm saying continue that.
Yes.
What the board does at board meetings is the purview of the board. I'm here to advocate for the safety of my staff and the students within the district. And I believe the safety measures that are in place now are essential going forward.
So.
Nice way of saying if the board would like to make masks or required or not at board meetings, that's not my decision. My decision is solely based on the students and staff.
So are we saying that in these board meetings, the risk is not as high? As, why am I putting words in your mouth? You're just saying you don't want to take a position on it?
I'm not a public health official, nor am I invested in, you know, policing the board. You know, the board can make its own decisions for its meetings.
Not policing either, huh? I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Ms. Brown?
So under, currently, the numbers in the community indicate that under either one of these charts, we would be masked anyway right now. Both, that's what the numbers on these charts. What I am aiming to do is to give a goal with this motion. I am the one, I am one of the people that was interpreting it as this, if we choose to adopt one of these matrices, that we will, it will then apply to the masking rule for the city. That was my interpretation. I'm sorry, for the city, for the school district. The goal here of by getting some kind of actual measurable way to see an end, to be monitored, is what my intention was by making this amendment. Would you, would you say, but I'm kind of hearing now that your recommendation, so we'll be masked right now through the schools tomorrow if we adopt one of these. Is your, are you saying now that you'd prefer us just leave it as a blanket, wear masks until we change our minds? Or do you think there should be, should we adopt one of these so we have a reason to watch numbers? Does that make sense? Am I asking that correctly? I guess I want to know is, do you want to just, would you rather just have the power and make a motion later when it comes to it? Or do you want to have something in place that you can look at and say, hey, when we get to positive, negative positivity, or positivity rate below 50 or lower in the, over the last seven days, that then we can go to the moderate instead of the substantial? Or whatever? It doesn't, honestly, either one of these matrices would be better than no matrix at all, in my opinion. But do you have an opinion on that?
So I guess, no, I don't want any power to do anything. Two, the two most frequently said words in these meetings when we transcribe the minutes are masks and McKinney. So I'd rather get to a place where we're not talking about masks. I don't think we should do anything until we get out of substantial for seven days. And to such time, then we can revisit this. But it's against all the recommendations not to be wearing masks at that time. Basically, the takeaway from Dr. Chance's presentation is we're masking as a preventative measure or you're trying to do it too late when there's an outbreak or a cluster. So the health and safety are the number one priority of the school district and the board. That's why we're doing what we're doing. So I wouldn't change or do anything until we come out of substantial. When you have a public health update, then you can make those changes. But until then, it's about testing, increasing vaccinations, doing all the safety precautions that we have. And I'm telling you, I've been in a full day at both high schools, a half-day each. I had lunch with 10 5th graders. I'm hearing from the middle schools. The compliance rate is like 99%. The kids wear their masks, they do what they're supposed to. Learning is happening. It's a good thing. The little kids are struggling. They haven't been in the building in a year. Kindergarten's having a tough time, first grade too. They're getting acclimated. We haven't even been back like 20 school days. I think it's premature to make any changes at this time. I hope that's clear. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Ms. Gilio?
I think, I think I can simplify this a little. And maybe I'm just oversimplifying it. But I believe that this, what we're looking at is whether or not we want this matrix to apply to the Board of Education only. It has nothing to do, we already have mandates for the students and the staff. We had asked at the last meeting for this. We asked Dr. McKinney for a copy of this matrix so that we had something that we could look at so that at some point, even if we're requiring masks now at our meetings, we may not be when things improve. But as long as we're substantial, then I believe that we're looking at this. And I think that's all we're talking about tonight.
All we're talking about, right. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. I have a couple of things, and I won't belabor the point because it is getting late. So one of the things that I did since the last time we were here was I attended a webinar with the New Hampshire School Boards Association regarding public participation in school board meetings. And we are not at all the only district who is struggling with these kinds of questions. It seems like most districts are struggling with these questions. And just to speak to the masking, 2/3 of the districts in the state are requiring masks for all people in their buildings. So one of the things that came up in this webinar, and it was in the front page of the Concord Monitor on September 15, was a story about how some districts were having in-person meetings, but then zooming in or having people call in who weren't able to come to the meetings because not, because participants not wearing masks made them at risk of harm because they had certain conditions. And the point of masks is that when I wear a mask, if I happen to be asymptomatic COVID, it catches a large portion of the COVID germs from going out into the air. And when you wear a mask, your mask, it's then double the protection. But it's still harm reduction. It's not perfect. But what the attorneys in many of the districts are saying to their school boards and what the School Boards Association's recommendation is that by having people who are at risk of harm because of their own medical conditions and cannot attend our meetings, they are violating the right to know law. Because the right to know law is also called the open meetings law. And that requires in-person meetings accessible to all. And their interpretation, and this is the School Boards Association interpretation and the interpretation of the attorneys referenced in the Concord Monitor story, is that we must have masks at school board meetings to make them open for all. Because masking does not constitute a health risk to people, whereas not masking does. So that was the end-all of the entirety of the conversation regarding that. They said we must make it in-person accessible to all, that the ADA requires that meetings be equally accessible to individuals of all abilities. Therefore, if we're asking people to call in or come in by the internet because they can't come in if people are not masked, it means that we're violating the ADA. Because not everybody has internet access. Not everybody has the ability to call in. So their recommendation is masking, period. And so that's kind of how we left it at that meeting. And that's what I would recommend to this body. So, Ms. Ziem?
So that would be a yes on the amendment as well as the?
I would personally, I'm going to vote no on the amendment. I think the amendment just sets us up to have a trigger point that people might not be prepared for. I would prefer to continue to do what we are doing, which is getting a public health update. And then when we see the numbers change from red to orange to green, we have the capacity to say, it's been green for two weeks or it's been orange for two weeks. Let's make a motion to make masks optional, or whatever it is. Just like we did last spring when we started going back into school on hybrid in February. And then we got all the way up to no masks for the summer. So we've been really good about following public health guidelines as they come up. I don't want to adopt this, which was not something recommended by public health at all. I just think that that's wrong. I think that we stay with what public health says. And I think that until public health sends us a memo or sends us the thing that says you're ready to go masks optional, that we wait for that. I don't want to be making health decisions. I'm not, I'm just, I'm not. I'm not a doctor. So go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
And Dr. McKinney had requested that we do, once we get out of substantial, that it's a seven-day out of the substantial before we start readdressing this. If we meet practically every other week, we're not really going to be missing any time in between the recommended kind of safe week and then when we can come back in and vote on it. So by adopting this matrix, we still have to come back into a meeting, vote on it. So we're pretty much just making more work for ourselves.
Agreed. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Well, I would disagree with Ms. Bishop's last statement. If we adopt the matrix, then we don't have to have a meeting about it at all. We don't even have to talk about it. It can just be the numbers. We follow them. When we're out of substantial, it moves to targeted. When we're out of moderate, it moves to optional. It's, or I'm sorry, I don't, honestly, like I said, I don't really care which one of these. But my question for this board would be, what is the magic number? Is it 50? Is it 10? Is it 3? Is it 0? I think by having a measurable number in place, we know that we have a target that we can follow and it takes it out of our hands. We can stop voting on it. We can stop talking about it. We can say, hey, community, get to this number and then you can take your masks off. As opposed to having to keep talking about this over and over and over. In all honesty, I think it's exactly the opposite. I think we're creating more work for ourselves by keeping this in our hand with nothing measurable. Anyway, I also would say I won't be commenting anymore tonight. And I'm okay to call the question if everybody's ready to vote.
All right, so the motion is to call the question. So those wishing to stop discussing it and wishing to vote would vote yes to call the question. Yes, we want to stop talking about it. No, I have more to say. I want to continue discussing it. Okay? Ms. Bishop, when you're ready?
On called question, I vote yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Let's vote.
Okay, so the vote is on the amendment. And the amendment is to adopt the matrix provided by Dr. McKinney in the original return-to-school plan. This page here dated 8/6. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. On the motion to adopt the matrix, Ms. Bishop votes no. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Five noes and one, two, three, four yeses. Motion, motion doesn't pass.
Okay. So the amendment fails. We are back to the original motion, which is to require everyone, including board members, wear a mask at all board meetings until COVID numbers indicate when it is safe to stop wearing masks. Yes.
Can we ask questions and comments or?
Yes, I was just going to say one thing on that. When we talked about when COVID numbers say it, we have this great thing, the COVID dashboard, that we get an email about every Friday. And then Ms. Bagley gives us a little PowerPoint every Monday that tell us in a color-coded way what the number is should we want to move forward and changing. So go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
In regards to not wearing masks for those who have medical exemptions, we can't ask if a person has a medical exemption. Are we able to create a safe space in here for people not wearing masks to keep them socially distanced from people who need to wear masks or want to wear masks?
No, we cannot. It is not possible, given that we are in a windowless, ventilationless room, to have a safe space for individuals who choose not to wear masks.
So there's no way of keeping them six feet away from somebody else?
No. Six feet away does not work in a windowless, no-ventilation room. Because you need masks. Right now, the CDC and the New Hampshire Department of Health is asking for layered protection. Six feet plus masks plus ventilation. What we would be doing then is taking away two of those three layers and telling people who currently don't feel comfortable coming in because of their own medical issues that they can't come in. The advice of the attorneys at the state was very clearly that if you didn't want to wear a mask, then you needed to not be here.
But if you have a medical exemption to not wear a mask, which we don't have to ask anybody to prove, we are then preventing them from being able to come to the meetings. So we have to make.
That's not what the ADA says. So the ADA does not, the ADA makes an exception for, what is the word? The ADA makes an exception for a specific level of community risk. Oh, it constitutes a high threat. So COVID constitutes a high threat. And in that case, it is an exemption from the ADA requirements that we allow people who have a medical exemption. And I would say this, that there are very, very few medical exemptions to mask-wearing. I might be the only person that I know who has one. And that's because I have a nerve condition where the mask causes me facial pain. So I could potentially not wear one and get a letter from my doctor. But I have not heard of any other circumstance, that's not true. No, I haven't heard of any other circumstance where someone has a medical exemption with a doctor's note. Back in, in the time of the emergency, Governor Sununu made Order Number 74, which said that you did not have to demonstrate your medical exemption. But that order expired when he ended the end of the thing. So HIPAA doesn't apply here either.
So my question is, we have, and I really am speaking to the audience that we've been having lately. If we're saying that we're going to mask everybody, the people who don't wear masks anyway can say they have a medical exemption and we can't turn them away for the public meeting, and they don't have to prove that they have a medical exemption. So how do we enforce this policy?
The recommendation of the attorneys at the state and the attorneys in the article quoted in the Concord Monitor was that if you don't wear a mask, you don't have access to the meeting. That we ask them to leave. If they don't leave, that then you can request assistance in making them leave. That was repeated multiple, multiple times in the webinar that I went to. And it's in the article. There is no, the risk to the pub, here's the issue. The risk is to the public from the people not wearing the mask. The risk is not to the mask-wearers.
I'm not arguing about what's right or wrong. I'm arguing about if we make this policy, how do we enforce it? And then how do we allow for everybody to have a space to speak? Are we going to be able to have phone calls in, Zoom in?
No. No, the recommendation at the state level was mask.
Hold on, hold on. I'm like fighting for you guys over there, so just hold on. We're talking it out.
The recommendation by the attorneys at the state level was if there is no mask, there is no access, period. And it falls under the New Hampshire Constitution, Article 3, which says that in a civil And it falls under the New Hampshire Constitution, Article 3, which says that in a civilized society, you must give up some liberties in order to exist in a civilized society. And this is been, this is what, this is one of those. So go ahead, Ms. Ziem.
I just would like to say that goes to what I was trying to say earlier, the greater good. And I know that's, I know that's hard for some of us to accept. It's hard for me to accept at times. But I think we do have, as a community, I think we have an obligation to look to the greater good. And the greater good is that if you come in, and you may not even know you have the germ, but you give it to somebody and that person dies, then that was not the greater good. I understand, and it's all right. I'm happy to hear your point. I just, I just think the greater good, the greater good is to mask. I don't like it any more than any of you, but I think it's, it's what I will vote for. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I know that we keep coming back to Executive Order 74 that no longer exists, but this had to go through all the legal in order for it to have that final line, number six. A person who declines to wear a mask or face covering because of medical developmental issue or difficulty breathing shall not require to produce a document or other evidence verifying the condition. This had to go through legal. This had to go through everybody, because at the beginning, it talked about educated students and staff within K through 12. Any person with a medical condition or disability that prevents wearing a mask or face covering. Any person engaged in physical strenuous physical activity, you know, any person giving a religious, medical, media, educational, cultural, musical, or theatrical presentation or performance for an audience. So this had had to go through legal in order to get to this point. So the legality of this has already been determined at the state level for Executive Order 74 to have come out. So if anybody's in the audience, I don't care which side of the aisle you're on, if they don't produce anything and they have a medical condition, you're going to tell them that this is a public building that the taxpayers paid for, and that they've all paid for this building. You're going to tell them you have no right to enter this building? That's unheard of.
I'm not an attorney, Ms. Johnson. I don't know, but I know that that's what they're doing at the City Hall, and I know it was what was done last year. And I can only speak to what the attorney said at the training.
Okay, then I'm going to bring this up again. So in this high school, members of the Board of Aldermen could sit here without a mask on, but if we go into their end, they demand you to wear a mask at the City Hall and everything else. They were the same ones that put the mask ordinance in last year, that made the businesses become police officers, and violated this Executive Order 74 by council. Obviously, somewhere went wrong here because they didn't read it. So you're going to tell a board member who has a health condition, mask up if they have the medical letters behind it? I'm not saying that, you know, it's, I was elected to be on this board, and if you have a medical condition, and the documentation is there, which I'm not showing anybody, but the documentation is there saying what I can and cannot do, so it's already there. So I've already proved it with the mask. And so I'm not going to bring it out, put it out here. I can be put on Facebook about the whole thing again, but hey, I've been on the phone with ADA also. I've been asking questions. So I'm at the Justice Department level now with the questions.
I think that's, you know, reasonable for you to do. I don't have any objection to that.
But if somebody comes in here who's on a board, who's on the board, that shows the reason that they can't wear a mask, you cannot tell them that they can't sit here on the board under ADA, because you're saying that they would have to show proof, which is...
I'm saying that the ADA makes an exception in the time of COVID, that masking up makes it, there's an exception, because, see, I wrote it down so that I would read it correctly. And now I have moved it.
Not what I heard from council when I questioned them.
Well, I think that's reasonable. I can't, like, let the attorneys argue it out. I don't know.
I've already asked counsel, city council.
I'd like to pull the question.
I think we should call the motion.
Okay. Ms. Timmons has called the question. A yes vote means we end discussion and we vote. A no vote means we continue to have the discussion. Where did I write that?
Okay, on the motion, on the vote to call the question, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
We go to vote.
Thank you. What was the number?
Seven to two, in favor.
Okay. So the question was regarding the motion, which I will read again. Everyone, including board members, wear a mask, oh, sorry, require everyone, including board members, to wear a mask at all board meetings until COVID numbers indicate when it is safe to stop wearing masks. This was originally a motion by Ms. Timmons that was seconded by Ms. Gilio.
I have a question.
We can't. Call the question means we can't do anything except...
I thought we called the question on the, on the, okay, never mind.
We did that one too, on the amendment.
Sorry.
So, I'm thinking, sorry.
That's okay. I will, Ms. Johnson was wanting to know where we are. We already, we already did the call the question on the amendment, and that failed, I'm sorry, four yeses to five nos. So now we're on call the question, and we're voting on the original motion without any more discussion. Do I, do I need to read it again, or are we good?
We've done read it about 10 times.
Okay. Okay. So I vote yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to two.
Okay. So that takes effect at our next board or committee meeting. I don't expect anyone to run out and get on a mask at this current exact moment, although if you have one, I would request that you put one on. Starting our next meeting, we will be requiring people to wear masks. If you're not going to wear a mask, then we will ask you to leave. If you continue to refuse to wear a mask or refuse to leave, that is considered disrupting the meeting, and we will again ask you to leave or have you escorted out.
Am I asked a question?
Yes.
Face shield is reasonable accommodations? So if somebody can't wear a mask, face shield?
I suppose so.
Thank you.
I don't actually know.
I think it is. That would be my, I mean, you see the medical people doing it, so if they, Ms.
McKinney says not typically. It has to be either a three-ply cotton mask or a medical mask.
I would advise the board not to respond until you consult with a board attorney.
Thank you.
Okay, that makes sense.
Probably good advice. Thank you.
All right. So I will talk to, I will talk, excuse me, you were disrupt, excuse me. It's literally two minutes from public comment. Just wait. We will discuss it with public health and our board attorney. Okay. The last item on unfinished business was the New Hampshire School Board training webinar regarding public comment, and I think we have really discussed that at length. The only thing to note is that public comment is supposed to be a chance for the public to make comments at our meetings. It was interesting to learn that some boards don't do two public comment periods. They just have one, and that's it. You get only one chance to talk. I like what we do, so if there are no objections, I'd like to keep it. And then it was just to remind everyone that we do have channels through which public complaints are able to be made. So if someone has a complaint about personnel, we ask that you refer to Policies KE or KEB and go through those channels, which is basically to go teacher to principal and on up, and not make comments or complaints about personnel here at our meetings, because it can violate the right to know law. I think that was it. Anything you wanted to add, Ms. Bishop? No. Okay. Okay. New business, we have the Para-educator Contract 2020-2022. Did anyone have a motion they'd like to make? Ms. Ziem?
I make a motion that we approve the contract.
A second.
Okay. Okay. So the motion is to approve. Did anyone wish to speak to the motion?
I would just like to say how much I respect and admire and appreciate our para-educators. Their job is sometimes thankless, but I don't ever see them complaining, and they, they are, for the work they do, they're the best bargain we have in the district. No offense to the rest of you, but they are a bargain. Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to second the motion if it hasn't been seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. It was seconded by Ms. Oden and Ms. Bishop simultaneously. Did you wish to speak on it, Mr. Guarino?
No, I will support it.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else have anything to say about the motion? Okay, seeing nobody. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Okay, thank you. The next step will be sending that on to the Aldermen. Yeah, oh, yes, Ms. Brown?
I had a few items of new business that I'd like to bring up.
Okay.
So, so I actually have three items. I didn't expect this to be in non-public for so long, so I apologize. I know it's getting late, but I think they really are important.
Okay.
So I appreciate letting me have the floor for a minute.
So... No problem. I just want to direct your attention to our policies, which do say that anyone can add items on the agenda, but that new items are due the Tuesday before the meeting, so that we are able to get them on to the agenda and give public prior notice.
Yes, and I don't expect there to be anything that I'm, actually, our policies also state that I can bring up something in new business to add to a future agenda or to send a committee that the president should direct those things to committee. So I think that's, the items that I have on this list here are really important to be talked about, and they're not COVID-related, so I think that's really awesome. So number one's actually more of a request from the district, and I don't know if it needs to go through committee, but I think it's important. I wanted to request, and this maybe is just maybe something that Dr. McKinney would just be okay with, on our website, and as a lot of people know, it's very, very difficult to access through a mobile device, but also it's hard to, you have to take multiple clicks to find everything on even a desktop. Specifically, on the Board of Education dropdown menu, we've had, we list our agenda, but we don't put the agenda documents related to that agenda under the agenda documents. You have to then go click over into the Policy Committee, for example, to get the policies for tonight, or the, we had a very large packet with a $500 million, I'm sorry, $500,000 item on the list today for curriculum evaluation, for example, but you'd have to click back into the Curriculum Evaluation tab in order to read those contracts. I guess I don't know if this needs to go through the board, or if I can just make a request to the district that when we post the agenda, we can also do a hyperlink or just even put in the same PDF, the corresponding documents that we'll be voting on that night. I think it would be helpful to the community, and it would be helpful to me, because I don't always access things through paper. Sometimes I do it digitally, and it would make it much more convenient. So that's, I guess, a request. I don't know how you'd want to handle that, put it on an agenda, whatever. So, thank you. Can I go on?
Yes, please. Next item?
Thank you. My second item, and I think this is an item that needs to probably go through Finance and Operations, that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight, but, or it could possibly go into Curriculum. I think we've been made aware that there's a toner shortage and a, probably a paper shortage on the way. In addition, we have purchased over the last year many computers, and hopefully they're being set up. We've also opened our bandwidth at the school, and I'd like to see if there's a way that even if we can't get around the purchasing of ink and paper, that we can find ways to make sure that especially at those upper levels of education, middle school and high school, that English language arts teachers and probably social studies teachers, anything that's very, you know, essay-intensive, maybe we can find a way to have them have better access to computers, whether we need to make an accommodation so students can bring their computers into school if they have one, or so they're distributed them, or the option could be that we have each, a computer for each child, student, I should say, while they're at school. They don't even have to take it home, because I also heard that there's lots of high school students that are being asked to use their mobile devices for, to access Google Classroom because they're limited on, the English department, for example, in this high school, is limited to one or two computer carts, and I think it means their jo, I think that makes the teachers' jobs more difficult. So I guess my request then for the board with that knowledge is that we get a recommendation either through Curriculum or through Finance to make sure that, at the very least at the high school and probably the middle school level, we're using our resources that we've made very, very large investments in over the last year to make sure kids are getting the materials they need. So I don't know, if, I don't know, Mr. Donovan, would you say that, or Dr. McKinney, would you say that would be something we should discuss in Curriculum or in Finance?
We'll bring it back to the leadership team and present a recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney.
Where would you think we should bring it through for a committee, though? If the president were to direct it to a committee?
Our next meeting with the board president, and I'll share our recommendation.
I have just one more item, and this is, might actually be some discussion that's really necessary. I did not know, honestly, I just found out this last week, that our substitute teacher pay dropped back down to our pre-COVID pay rates. I actually didn't know that. I know that the motion we originally made, I had to look back at it, because I had kind of forgotten it, slipped my mind, that our substitute teacher pay raise, we had gone up to 115 a day for, did the daily rate, and that's gone back down to $77 a day. And I know that we are in dire straits for the number of substitute teachers in classrooms going on attendance, or having to consolidate things. And I know that's a heavier load to put on classroom teachers to know that they then maybe have to watch two classrooms instead of one. So if it would please the board, I know this is out of order, I would like to make a motion to take the substitute teacher pay back up to our temporary raise, and then discuss, and then discuss it through Finance later. I know it's not, it's be off of the agenda, but if the board would allow it, I would like to do that.
So, I'm sorry, your motion is to...
I'm not making a motion, because technically I can't, but I don't think I can. Can I make a motion during new business? You said, you said I couldn't, without putting on the...
Dr. McKinney has a response.
I think it would be in the board's best interest to get all the accurate information before making a motion or any decisions. So, Mr. Donovan, could you just give an overview of the substitute teacher rates?
Well, keep in mind, the rate of 115 was approved by the board for the rest of last year. So that's, then it ended. So that's, then it ended, and we went to 77. Any time you want to make a motion, you have to have a funding source. So if you want to increase my salary by double, that's fine. I'm all for it.
You deserve it.
But, but you have to have a funding source. You just can't do it. So think of the significance of 77 to $115 times how many people. So that's an important part of any discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I had sent Mr. Donovan an email regarding this, and I asked him to please put it on the agenda for our next meeting so we could see it, and I'm sure if there's a funding source, excuse me, he'll find it, so this is a good way to discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, because there are different types of subs and different rates for different types of subs, so.
So I'm sure we'll be able to figure something out.
All right. So it sounds like Ms. Johnson and Mr. Donovan are already on top of that one. So I don't think we need to vote to send it to Finance because it's already there. Okay. Good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys spending time on those.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Guarino.
Did we, did we move to seal the minutes of the non-public, and if not, I would move to do so?
That was a very good catch. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Mr. Guarino remembers to move to seal the motion, the minutes of the non-public at nine, well, 8:59 PM.
Second.
Yes. Okay. Does anyone want to discuss that? Or come and go ahead with roll call.
Ms. Bishop, sorry. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay. Thank you. I thought I had one last item, but I don't see it now. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the second public comments period. If we could stick to three minutes, don't interrupt people. I've got it, Mrs. Johnson.
You have it?
Yep. Don't interrupt people while they have the floor. Again, I will call the person who's up and then the person after them so that they know and can prepare. All right. So first is Adam Markou, and next is Britt Hatch.
Adam Markou for Jolory Lane. I'm president of the Nashua Teachers Union. I'd like to thank you for the nine-zero vote to approve the contract for the paraeducators of this district. I gave my spiel about them before. Can never say enough about that group. One thing that I will note, if you're going to discuss substitute pay, the starting pay for a para is less than $15 an hour. So if you use 15 and multiply it by six, which is their workday, that's $90 a day. If we're going to pay substitute teachers who may or may not have equivalent education experience, 115 or whatever, I'm just using the number that we used last year, that is not going to go over well with the paraeducators that have been here a long time and are dedicated to this district, and what is their incentive to remain a para and not become a substitute teacher? I can tell you that we have talked ad nauseam about substitutes in this district. When I was vice president, when I was on the Board of Directors of the union, we have talked about substitutes forever. I don't think it's going away. Do I think we could entice more people with more money? Yes. However, I would also remind you that then some of our paras would be making less, and then I will be back asking for more money for them at their next contract. So, and that substitute shortage also goes to nurses, paras, food service, you just run down the list. So just a lot to keep in mind. I don't think it's a terrible idea to talk about it because I think we need to do something. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markou. Britt Hatch, and then Sue Newman.
Yeah, I failed to give my proper voting name, Catherine Britton Hatch, 41 Canongate 3 in Nashua. I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Brown about the, trying to find the agenda online, I can never do it, so please, please, help. And secondly, I was so delighted to hear Dr. McKinney talk today about, about the, I'm sorry, excuse me. On my way in the car today, I was listening to NPR, and I heard an interview concerning the Nashua School District and specifically the head nurse in the Nashua School District. And there were two women being interviewed. I can't be certain exactly who said what, but it concerned the fact that when children are in school and they come down with some symptoms, which could possibly be COVID-19, the school nurse often has to send the child home and say that the child can't return until the child has a negative test result. And as Heather herself found out, it can be very, very difficult to get one of those tests. One of the women who was interviewed said that she went, you know, she numbered off all the different places where she had gone or tried to go or get an appointment she was not able to get for her child. Ultimately, she ended up at Convenient MD where she paid $175 for the test. And we know that, you know, a lot of our families aren't, can't easily come up with that kind of money. So I'm delighted to know that you are trying to think about, I think you said something about SAS tests? What is that? I don't know what that exactly means, but I think that that's what we were talking about. And go for it, please. The, our families need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob Johnson, oh, sorry, Sue Newman, and then, and then Rob Johnson.
Sue Newman, 25 Charlotte Avenue in Nashua. First, I have to acknowledge the grace that Ms. Zim showed this evening, talking about her situation, what she went through, and the kindness that she showed to everybody, whether people agreed that masks were a right thing to do or not. So, Ms. Zim, when I grow up, I want to be like you.
Me too.
Second, I just want to go back to what, I think it was Mrs. Cantwell who spoke in the first session, made a comment on why would anybody healthy want to, why would you want healthy people to wear a mask? And Ms. Zim again went over it. It's the asymptomatic potential for spread that's out there that has made this terrible disease so confounding and so, so invasive for all of us. People that look and act totally healthy can be spreading it, and a mask will help. Which brings me to the third thing. I want to talk about Swiss cheese. One of the doctors that I have heard, I mean, we've all heard a number of doctors over the, well, going on 19 months right now about the disease, but it was a woman, as I recall, excuse me, it was a woman, and she talked about Swiss cheese because she was well aware of everybody yipping and yapping over masks, no masks, what are you going to do? They don't work all the time, they're not foolproof, whatever. But she said, imagine Swiss cheese, it's got holes in it, but if you have six layers of Swiss cheese on top of each other, you are likely preventing something coming in. Not 100%, but you're likely doing it. So you've got a mask, you've got ventilation going on, you've got hand washing, you've got some distancing going on, you've got sensibilities and discretion in public places, and you've got vaccinations. So if you layer these things together and you're wearing a mask, we've got a shot. That's no pun intended for a vaccine, but anyway, that's it. And I'm going to be glad that people are going to have to be wearing some masks. The library has been doing this for some time now in Nashua. I spoke with them recently, and I haven't been there, but they didn't, they seem to be humming along just fine, and they're working with, it sounds like how you're going to be conducting business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Johnson, and then Gary Hoffman.
Hi, I'm Rob, Robert Johnson, 70 Weathersfield Road. Ms. Zim, you are a rock star. Thank you for everything you said tonight, because that really says a lot to why we're wearing these. We're trying to lift up the lowest people, the people who are immunocompromised, the people who have suffered through illnesses. They need us to wear these masks. They need us to protect them, and that's what we can't lose sight of. And finally, because I don't want to take a long time, people need to be vaccinated, and I think we need to do more to get especially our older kids, our high school kids, to get vaccinated. The sooner they can get vaccinated, the sooner they can get rid of these masks, and that's what we have to strive to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Hoffman?
Gary Hoffman, 38 Perham Street. I want to echo what everyone's saying. Ms. Zim, you are really a role model, I think, for all public officials in this state. Your grace, you know, your just appeal to civility, I think, you know, everyone can learn from that. I do want to thank the entire board for passing the Para Educator Contract. However, I have a challenge. Starting pay is still under $15 an hour. Future contracts, we really got to get that base pay up somehow. I mean, the fact that you can, there are, you can work, Adam had said earlier to me that you can work at a, you know, a car wash and earn $15 an hour. We got it, we, we really, really need to get the pay up for the paras and also get that health insurance more affordable. Third thing I want to say, I did want to agree with Paula about Facebook. I agree, it is toxic. We need to be better to each other on social media. No one should be talking about each other's jobs. However, I do want to mention, so it was mentioned earlier about people with asthma. I wear a mask all day. I've had asthma all my life. I almost died of it when I was a kid, three times. I wear a mask, it's not an issue for me. I also have heard repeatedly from some people that they say that the COVID virus is too small to be stopped by a mask. That is true, but the COVID virus does not travel on its own. COVID virus actually travels on particles, mostly water droplets. That is stopped by the mask. Northwestern University actually debunked this myth recently. The virus, the COVID virus does not travel on its own, it travels on droplets. A mask stops that, especially if you have like a KN-95 like I wear. And the best, really evidence of masks, in my opinion, South Korea was the second country on earth to have a COVID outbreak. 51 million people, they stopped it before there was a vaccine available, pretty much with just masks and contact tracing. 51 million people, only 2,400 people have died of COVID versus the United States with over 700,000 deaths. I don't like wearing the masks either, but we have to because we have to care about our community, we have to care about each other, and more importantly, we know they work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. And this concludes our second comment period of the evening. Okay. Board member comments. Ms. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Actually, I almost never make a comment, but I really have, this is a little random. I drive past about three times a week this crossing guard at the corner of, I guess it's Kinsey or West Hollis, West Hollis, and where the little tracks go across. I actually don't know the intersection that it is. She's always dancing, she's always smiling, she is amazing. So I don't know who you are, crossing guard, but every single time I drive past you, you put a smile on my face. So I am assuming you're doing the same thing for kids and other people in the community, so keep doing what you're doing. I appreciate anybody who takes pride in their work, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Oden?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Richard for giving such a wonderful presentation, bringing us the math club. There was just so much to it. And I also want to say why I voted for the mask. Maybe two weeks ago, the board received an email from a parent who was immunocompromised and couldn't come to our meetings because we didn't have that. Well, we, you don't, we can't call in, we don't have Zoom anymore, so that person absolutely could not come and advocate for her child, and I thought that was wrong. So that's why I supported it. I just think we need to look at everybody in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Ms. Bishop?
I also want to thank Nashville South for bringing, bringing their Mathletes to us. It was, the Mathletes and the art, it was nice to remember that what we do in this school district is we teach kids, and we give them opportunities to grow and develop and hone their hobbies and interests. And it was, it was a nice pause on what it feels like, the never-ending conversation about masks and COVID, to remember that what our teachers and our staff do for our students is to grow them into adults who enjoy their lives. And that's exactly what Mr. Richard showed us that they're doing, and I hope to see more of that, and I hope that everybody remembers that that's what we do for our students here. We grow them and we give them opportunities, so made me feel good. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, my comment is pretty fast. I like to say, Kayla, congratulations from Nashville High North, you made the honor roll. The first time ever you heard, you saw that message come in this morning, Heather. I am very proud of Kayla. So our schools are doing things. They're, they've got kids rocking. Go, Kayla.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Gilio?
Yeah. Unless I hallucinated, I believe that I was called out for having about five minutes at the JS SBC meeting, not wearing a mask at the beginning of the meeting the other night. I believe that a picture was taken of me, if I'm not imagining this. Okay. I just want to say that, beginning in May, when we first came back to in-person meetings, I am the one person on the board who has been wearing a mask religiously. I'm not doing it now because I want to be heard. At the beginning of some meetings, like the other night's JS SBC meeting, before everyone has arrived, and there is six feet between me and other people, I take a few minutes without my mask. I had my third vaccine yesterday. I am, oh, what mask wearer everywhere, and so I don't appreciate not being allowed to take a five-minute mask break when I am socially distanced before a meeting has even started. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Ms. Zim?
We've had an awful lot of talk tonight, so I just want to say thank you to the, to the people who care enough about our kids to come to these meetings, week after week, month after month, and year after year. And I have to say, it is more often than not the same people. If you really care about your community, you need to be here. You need to be, even when you disagree with me, I'm happy, I don't mind you disagreeing, I think it's healthy, but I really appreciate the people who come all the time. I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
All right. Well, I think that that is the best place to end things this evening. So I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Wait.
Oh, Ray, I skipped Ray. Ray?
Yeah, real quick. Okay, I just wanted to thank my board members for allowing me to do remote access. I did have to work late, and I am feeling feverish, so I thought it was better to stay away. I want to thank President Raymond for articulating the issues very clear about masks and the legalities. I think he did a great job, and it was clear to the, to the members on how to vote. And of course, Ms. Zim, for her wisdom, she spoke very eloquently with empathy and kindness, and we should all listen to Ms. Zim closely, to her words, and take her advice, we'll have a better, we'll be a better city for it. I want to mention that the CDC did a study, districts without a mask mandate are three and a half times more likely to get a COVID outbreak. So I think we did the right thing here to stem the tide of COVID. So, I think we did the right thing here to stem the tide of COVID in our district. And Gary Hoffman, thank you. Thank a teacher for explanation, the scientific explanation for why masks work and how it stops COVID. It always takes a teacher to give us the straight and narrow. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for giving me this time.
Can I ask Ray something? Just a question. He said he was feverish.
Yeah.
That's a good thing to tell me.
Okay, so we'll do that, we'll do that offline. First, let's do a motion to adjourn.
Okay. So, moved.
Okay, so the motion is by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Timmons. We do have to do a roll call. Wait, wait, Mr. Donovan.
I'm just ready to go, that's all.
I can press the button if you need to go.
All right.
Okay, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zeeem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at 9:20 PM. Have a good night.